Fourth, 2025. It is seven o'clock. We want to thank you for being here tonight. We're going to have a moment of silence for our invocation, and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Jim Lance. If you would please stand for a moment of Commissioner Lance?
I know Commissioner Smith is traveling, so, Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call.
Commissioner Lacoste?
Present.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Mayor Banky?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia?
Here.
Thank you.
We have two proclamations, one for American Heart Month, and the other one for Black History Month. And we have Jeannie Goodrich, CEO of Summit Point and Board Chair for the Coordinating Council, here to accept that. Would you please come forward? And then, secondly, we'll have Carrie Whitfield, President of the EVAR War Laws Right, and member of the Battle Creek NAACP, to accept. And you'll be right afterwards. So, thank you. Well, thank you for coming down and being here with us. Would you like to talk a little bit about the American Heart Association?
Well, thank you for the proclamation tonight. The American Heart Association, it is one of our issue-action groups under the Coordinating Council, and we're very excited to have this proclamation. I'll take this back to the Coordinating Council.
Can you get it out on the office?
Yeah. Can I hold on to it? Maybe. I don't know if I'm any help. The Coordinating Council is a collaboration of all the agencies, health agencies, in Calhoun County. And we have recently published the Community Health Needs Assessment on my Calhoun. And if you're interested in looking at more of the health data for Calhoun County, please visit us at that website.
Could you share with us any news with Summit Point? I know that you moved your office.
Oh, Summit Point, okay. So, we've moved our office to 175 College Street recently. Prior to that, I think it was Regional Medical Lab. We have an urgent care center on one side. We have our clinic services and our administrative services on the north side. We're very excited with our new location and continue to see and meet the mental health needs in Calhoun County.
I had a phone call last week from an individual that was part of Roosevelt, I believe, and he had an old office there. And he says, can the mayor tell me where the new office is?
175 College Street.
I didn't know the number, but I said, I believe they have moved over to College.
That's correct.
College in West. So, you get some of the most unbelievable calls.
Thank you for fielding those for me.
Well, thank you very much. On behalf of the City Commission and the people of Battle Creek, we would like to present you with this proclamation. And I appreciate your participation in our meeting tonight. And you're free to go home after you're done. Carrie, thank you for being here. How are you?
I'm well, sir.
Nice seeing you. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Kathy. Nice seeing you. Carrie, would you like to say a few words?
The Battle Creek NAACP Branch 3132 would like to take this time to thank the City of Battle Creek for this proclamation. We view it as a reaffirmation of the City of Battle Creek dedication to diversity within this community.
Would anyone else like to say anything? Carla? Kathy? Commissioner Morris? No? Well, on behalf of the citizens of Battle Creek, we would like to observe the Black History Month and call our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And the City of Battle Creek continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all neighbors and visitors, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our Battle Creek community, the country, and the world. On behalf of the Battle Creek City Commission, we say thank you very much for your help, your participation, in bringing this request for the proclamation to our attention. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a presentation on our audit. I'm going to turn over our City Manager, interim City Manager Ted Neary. Ted?
Yeah, I'm the mayor, and I will turn it over to our Revenue Services Director, Q, who is here this evening, and he will have a conversation with our honor.
Thank you, Ted. Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. I have Nate Balderman with me from Raven Robson. He's the principal on our audit engagement. The city has a longstanding, good-working relationship with Raven Robson, and he's here to give a brief synopsis of our audit this year.
Welcome, Nathan.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I will be brief. Just want to give a quick update on the audit. And a thank you to the city, to Aaron and the Fiscal Services Team. They do a great job preparing for us, you know, in working through all the things that come up in an audit, implementation of new standards, implementation of new softwares, and the like. So, this year, the audit opinion that we issued on the financial statements was an unmodified opinion. When we look at a financial statement audit, our primary purpose of what we're looking for is issuing that opinion on the financial statements. When we're looking at the financial statements, the city does have the top level of financial statement presentation that you can have. You have a full annual comprehensive financial report, which meets the requirements of the Government Finance Officers Association. When you look at that document, you receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is to be commended. Not every city and municipality takes the time to do that, but your team puts that together and continuously receives that award. So, the award that's in the financial statements you see is based on the prior-year report. This report will be reviewed under those program requirements, and I'm sure it'll receive that award once again for 2024. When we're doing our audit, a lot of times, what places are looking for is that ultimate report on the financial statements from the auditor, but also to look at internal controls. We do, as a part of our audit, look at the internal controls, but it's for the purposes of forming opinion. We don't actually give an opinion on the controls. We give an opinion on the financial statements and report those items that come to our attention that meet the level of what we call a material weakness or a significant deficiency. On the financial audit, we did have one significant deficiency this year that is included in the report, and we worked with management. There's a corrective action plan included in the report as well that's been issued. So, the other part of our audit is the federal awards audit. Because you receive at least $750,000 of federal dollars and expended that during the year, we're required to perform that audit. This year, we looked at three different programs, which is kind of on the high side. The three programs we looked at were the Community Development Block Grant Program, the new one that's kind of unusual. It started coming up more recently is the Lead Abatement Program that we looked at. And then, we also looked at, as we have for several years now, and it's winding down, is the Fiscal Recovery Funds, or ARPA funds. We looked at that as well this year. Along with that, we do look at internal controls over compliance for each of those programs, and also, we test compliance. During our audit, we did have four different findings related to that. They all were what we consider to be a material non-compliance, so relatively small on the scale of things, and we did note those as significant deficiencies as well. And that spread across all three different programs. I will say, on some of that, some of the reporting requirements on a new program, sometimes a couple, at least a couple of them are related to reporting, and some things that you tend to come up with a new program that you don't have as much experience with in those. But, again, all items that are easily corrected in the corrective action plan that's been identified by management, put together, and submitted with the audit to the Federal Clearing House should clear up those items. So, in addition to the financial statements, so we basically issued three different reports. We have the Act for the financial statements, a single audit. We also issue a separate letter, a communication with those charged with governance, that goes over a lot of the required communications that we have with you. Included in that letter are a couple of different attachments. There's one that's Management Letter Comments. Those are items that are either internal control or other matters that come to our attention, that we like to bring to the attention of management and to the City Commission, but not that raise to that significant deficiency or material weakness. They're really those things that can just enhance controls and take it to the next level, and those are identified in that report. And finally, the last thing that I would point you to as you're looking at the report, if you really like to see what all the things that management is having to implement in terms of new accounting standards, those types of things, there's some new accounting standards that are listed out there. The list continues to grow. We're up to 104 is the latest standard that was issued. And there will be a new standard that has to be implemented this next year related to disclosure and reporting of compensated absences. So, that's something we will work with management in implementing in the next year. So, that is all of the report that I had, but be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions of Nathan?
No.
Good report, Nathan. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions.
There were none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports.
There were none.
Thank you very much. Next item is public comment regarding any specific agenda item. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any specific agenda item, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. Are there any comments? Joe?
Joe Harris, Battle Creek. I'm just going to speak briefly on one thing, and that's in regard to the City Manager position with the job description. You know, I didn't get a chance to come here to the meeting. I really wish I could have been here to that workshop. It was actually really good because I watched the access vision, and it's a really important decision that the Commission has to make. And I remember a conversation between, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Simmons, between Commissioner Simmons and the rest of the people that were here, commissioners that were here, in regard to, under key responsibilities, it says visionary leadership. And I think there is some discussion on that, that we don't want there to be a misunderstanding that it's the City Manager that is, you know, being the visionary as to where the city is going, that they actually, the City Manager serves at the pleasure of the Commission. It's the Commission that sets the policy. And I don't want there to be any confusion. So, I don't know if there's another term or word or terminology that can be used there, because I, you're going to kind of forgive me because I can't remember the complete discussion, but I remember there being a discussion about that terminology between the Commissioners. So, that might be something to consider. But everything looks decent so far. So, thank you. That's all I have to say today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comment at this time? Yes. Autumn?
Good evening, I'm Smith, Battle Creek. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item 72 regarding the hiring of a retired VCPD officer to the accreditation manager position. Would it be reasonable to put a fox in charge of the hen house? Why would we allow someone to help with the accreditation of an agency that's part of the agency themselves? Why wouldn't we reach out to a third-party independent agency, independent person, that is reviewing the items for accreditation? Why keep it in-house? If it's transparency you are looking for, then that would be the most appropriate thing to do, is to outsource it, especially when the police department has had a problematic and checkered past with transparency. Why is there a need for a separate accreditation individual? Isn't the job of the Office of Professional Standards supposed to be doing internal investigations within the department? Aren't they already tasked with being the watchdog of the department and overseeing transparency as well as accreditation? How can the citizens and community have peace of mind that they are going to be treated fairly and professionally if we put someone in from the department that has ties with the current and previous administrations? I am aware of two potential candidates. One is a recent retiree, and another has been retired for about two years. And if we are trying to get away from the old ways, why are we even entertaining bringing in either of these people in? We need new people that do not have ties to current administration. What qualifications does Todd Elliott or Brad Wise have prior to having this possible position of accreditation manager? Other than just experience, what specific training do either of them have for this position? How is this position being paid for? What budget is this coming from? PD? City? Grants? Other? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments at this time? Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I speak on the proclamation?
Sure.
That's on the agenda, right?
On the, no, I'm going to have to ask what you do at the end of the meeting. I'll call you first.
Thank you.
John Keneffick, 234 South Avenue. I have four resolutions I'll be talking about, Resolution 69, 70, and 71, and then finally, 73. Now, Resolutions 69, 70, and 71 have to do the water of Battle Creek. One has to do with the mains in post addition. One has to do with the wells out in Verona, and the third has to do with lead abatement as they go through and remove the lead from the lines of Battle Creek. The total cost from the taxpayers of these three resolutions is $20,828,4929. Now, we come up to Resolution Number 73. 73 is a bond, a loan, to pay for part of this. It's a $30 million loan. And when it's finally paid off, the total cost of the interest on top of that $30 million is $6,423,612. Now, what we have here that Autumn is showing you, and please turn the pages slowly, is the tax, what's called the Calhoun County Tax Foreclosure Notice. There are more than 3,000 notifications of foreclosures and back taxes in this listing. There's more than 300 per page. The concern here is these people are not being able to pay their taxes or their foreclosures. I wonder where the money went. Could it be all the loans that you've taken out and all the interest of millions and millions of dollars that you don't tell anybody about? The new Commissioner, I would suggest to her that she should find out from the City Manager and the Finance Department, in the past, how many loans were taken out, approved by the City Commission, how much were they worth, what was the interest rate, so the citizens of Battle Creek could find out how much money has gone out of the citizens' pockets that caused perhaps a lot of duress for them to pay back their foreclosure or their payments on their houses or their taxes. The purpose of this, nothing wrong with paying the water bills, but when you take out a loan or loans that you've taken out in the past, is it a financial burden to the citizens of Battle Creek? I personally do not care for loans because it costs too much when you finally get done. I know a lot of people that have lost their houses because they lost their jobs or something happened where they couldn't make the payments, and they lose their houses. One of those duress problems of finances is government taxation, not just from the City of Battle Creek, but Calhoun County government, state government, and federal government. I don't see where you're going to solve your problem by taking out a loan. And finally, last but not least, if this is an important issue of these three resolutions, which I consider them important, why did you not put money aside so that you didn't have to take out a loan in the first place? Shows to me that you're not watching it, and you're taking money and putting it on $2 million on a park that was nothing wrong with it, $425,000 for gas-powered golf carts, and paying for an ineffective arena that you've also got taken a loan out for $2.5 million. I suggest you get with your priorities instead of paying things for their non-priority and then taking loans out on things that are essential that the citizens actually pay for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Next item on our agenda is Commission Comment Regarding Meeting Business.
Support.
They moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda? The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 69. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution seeks acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for Contract B Post-Addition Water Main and Lead Service Line Replacements Project from Hoffman Brothers Incorporated in an estimated amount of $15,334,966.29 with unit prices prevailing. The City Manager or their designee is also authorized to approve change orders for up to 5% in aggregate for city-initiated and pre-approved changes for unforeseen field conditions that are not itemized in the contract. This project is funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF.
Approve the approval of Resolution 69?
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution 69. Are there any comments by the Commission? Ted, is there any chance that this $15 million could be reimbursed by the state?
I mean, well, because it's the lead pipe replacement, is there any chance that they may come up with the funds to reimburse us for this?
So, in this particular case, we were able to secure some funds from the state from their drinking water state revolving fund, and then we're paying back those that obligation. We both need to write and generate back the utility bills. So, this is just made, this is definitely we're assuming in order to get these capital projects that is factored into our rates for utility bills and under our current cabinet capacity.
Thank you. Any other comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 69? Resolution 69 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 70.
This resolution seeks acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for Contract C Verona Well Field Power and Control Improvements Project from Centennial Electric LLC in a not-to-exceed amount of $4,134,400. The City Manager or their designee is also authorized to approve change orders for up to 5% in aggregate for city-initiated and pre-approved changes for unforeseen field conditions that are not itemized in the contract. This project is funded through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF.
Approve the approval of Resolution 70?
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution 70. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 70? Resolution 70 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 71. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution seeks acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for Contract D Neighborhood Lead Service Line Replacements Project from Hunter Pearl Company in an estimated amount of $1,358,683 with unit prices prevailing. The City Manager or their designee is also authorized to approve change orders for up to 5% in aggregate for city-initiated and pre-approved changes for unforeseen field conditions that are not itemized in the contract. This project is funded through the Drinking Water Safe Revolving Fund, DWSRF.
Approve the approval of Resolution 71?
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution 71. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 71? Resolution 71 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 72. Madam Clerk?
Pursuant to Employment Provisions 296.09, Section C, no person shall be employed by the city or paid with city funds who has retired under the provisions of the Policeman and Fireman Retirement System. The City Manager may make exceptions to this provision with the approval of the City Commission when they feel the interest of the city would be served thereby. The Battle Creek Police Department currently has an immediate need for an accreditation manager. This resolution authorizes the interim City Manager to employ a VCPD retiree under 296.09, Section C, to perform duties as an accreditation manager on a part-time temporary basis.
Approve the approval of Resolution 72?
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution 72. Are there any comments by the Commission? Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to let everybody know. I just got done completing the Citizens Police Academy, and the accreditation manager is something that they definitely need. It's not so much that there's not going to be transparency. They're going to be looking at getting all the things together for the accreditation, so then, you know, someone from the state or federal government then comes and approves or disapproves that. But their primary responsibility is to get those files together and make sure all the boxes are checked, so they can do that. It seems like overall, the police departments are going to be going to accreditation for each department. For example, like crime scene investigation is accredited, and all the different aspects. So, they really, really need somebody in that capacity right now.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner. Any other Commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 72? Resolution 72 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 73. Next item on our agenda is Resolution seventy-three.
The city successfully secured funding from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, in 2024 for well-field rehabilitation, lead service line replacement, water main replacement, and improvements to the water treatment facility. This bond ordinance authorizes the issuance of the bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty million dollars. The full project amount is included, even though the loan amount and the amount to be repaid will be less. Approval of this resolution authorizes the issuance of Water and Leaswater System Junior Lean Revenue Bonds under the provisions of the Revenue Bond Act of nineteen thirty-three, Act Ninety-four, Public Acts of Michigan, nineteen thirty-three, as amended.
Move for the approval of Resolution seventy-three.
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution seventy-three. Are there any comments or questions by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution seventy-three? Resolution seventy-three has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution seventy-four. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, adopts a job profile for the city manager search based on feedback provided by commissioners, city staff, and local stakeholders.
Move for the approval of Resolution seventy-four.
Support.
They moved and supported to approve Resolution seventy-four. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution seventy-four? Resolution seventy-four has been approved. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comment. Kathy? I didn't forget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the Battle Creek City Commissioners for once again honoring Black History Month with a mayoral proclamation. We really appreciate the acknowledgement of that nature. As a resident of Battle Creek and of the United States, I believe it's really important to recognize and to acknowledge the contributions made by Black people to the creation, the development, the building of our country, and to their ongoing efforts to protect, defend, and sustain our communities. Perhaps someday, our history books and our history classes will fully narrate the significant historical legacy of Black people and of other people of color to the Americas. All too often, the names and Black identities of authors, inventors, artists, engineers, and businesspeople are forgotten. On your drive to the meeting today, you probably stopped at a traffic light, and you may or may not know that was invented by Garrett Morgan, a Black Cleveland businessman who also created the gas mask. And when I go home, I'll turn up, I'll crank up my gas furnace, and I'll thank Alice Parker, New Jersey woman who invented the modern system of heat distribution for our gas furnaces. And if you're really into fashion, you may know that Mary Todd Lincoln and Jackie Kennedy were fashion icons of their day, and their wedding dresses, as a matter of fact, made them significantly more knowable by the fashion industry, by the haute couture group, I believe it is, I can never pronounce that. And both of their dresses were created by Black seamstresses. Elizabeth Keckley, a former slave, designed all of Mrs. Lincoln's gowns, as well as a bunch of the other white ladies in town. And designer Anne Lowe created Ms. Kennedy's gown, which is still on display in many places and ranks at the top of lists. It's also important to notice, to note that neither one of these seamstresses or designers' names were acknowledged until many years later. And of course, we all know that both the U.S. Capitol Building and the White House were built almost exclusively by enslaved people, which is really ironic when you think about it. So, make sure that you avail yourself of all the opportunities that are going on during Black History Month to learn more about significant Black contributions to our society and to our communities. Make sure that you look at the different ways that Black, that Black folks have contributed, not just in fashion and in industry, but in your neighborhoods and amongst your community folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other public comments at this time?
And George Washington Carver for peanut butter, the people that are allergic to that, I'm sure appreciate that. I am going to comment on a couple things. One, the thing I said about accreditation, I wasn't against accreditation, let me make that clear, I understand what it is, but the way that it's been done in the past has not been done proper. I guarantee you, you could FOIA documents with Mr. Wise's name on it, and they're not supposed to cherry pick when they do accreditation. The third party or the state police or whoever comes in, they're supposed to just open files, grab things, they aren't supposed to cherry pick, they aren't supposed to give a heads up about, hey, I want an officer-involved shooting file, or hey, I want to look at CSC files, that's the problem. Another thing I want to comment on is I'm really troubled by the code department as far as the fact that it is now known that none of the code officials have oaths of office. Also, none of the, it's against Attorney General Opinion sixty-two thirty-two by Frank Kelly states, code officials are not allowed to issue tickets, and they've been doing that. Not only that, but if you don't have an oath of office and you're not a sworn officer, you can't do that either. Another thing is the fact that the code office is operating in a violation of separation of powers. You've got code officials that are doing the investigation, code officials that are doing the, you've got city attorneys that are doing the prosecuting, and then the city is reaping the benefits of any of the violations. That's a total separation of powers violation, and so I would sincerely hope that you guys look into that and fix that, because that already has opened you guys up to huge liability. Anybody that's been issued a ticket by a code officer that's not sworn and it's violating Attorney General Opinion sixty-two thirty-two, that's against the law. But it's also more troubling that you guys, I mean, this is high school civics to not understand separation of powers. You can't have an arm that investigates, prosecutes, and collects, that's a violation of powers. So, I sincerely hope you will look into that before you guys continue to violate more of the citizens' rights. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Lindsey Wheeler, my address is on file. Question, what is the opposite of a racist? There's hot and cold, right and wrong, high and low, everything has an opposite. So, what's the opposite of a racist? Figured that out? No, it's a genocider, person who commits genocide. Racism is the glue that holds a nation together. That's Marxist agitprop to attack racism. That's a religion, and you're imposing a religion upon us. Never thought of that. Well, Joe Biden said, we're going to make the whites in this country an absolute minority, and that's why he had the border open for his whole time, for four years, and allowed ten million people into this country. That's called ethnic dilution. Ethnic dilution is a form of soft genocide. Yeah, our government is genociding its ethnic heritage peoples of America. Isn't that great? And you're participating in that evil. And a genocider is one also that commits treason. You've committed treason against the Anglo-Saxon that built this country. Immigration, both legal and illegal, is ethnic dilution. That's why it was voted in, and it's a religion. And I'm sure glad you guys know that, right? Because you're all smart with college degrees. Yeah. That's why that Masonic Hall, you know what Masonry teaches? To remove the accidental divisions of mankind and to ending social prejudices. Masonry is a religion, they call themselves a religion. And you know where that comes from? Jewish Messianism, that requires the rebuilding of the Tower of Babel. What has America become? The Tower of Babel. And what did God destroy in Genesis? The Tower of Babel. And that's exactly what you're engaged in, pure, unadulterated evil. And I would hope that the city of Battle Creek allows ICE to do its enforcement and return these ten million plus the twenty million beforehand back to their own countries. I'm not for genocide, I'm not for genocide of anybody, but why are you genociding us? Because you are. And I hope that the city works with ICE and deports all these illegals in this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsey. Any other comments? Any other public comments? Yes, Reese Adkins.
Good evening, Reese Adkins, eighty-four South Twenty-third Street. I have three topics I will be talking about tonight. The first one is thanking the city commission for the proclamation for American Heart Association as it does hit me, being that I have a heart condition that is very rare and that's very difficult to fix. Second of all, I'd like to say thank you to the wonderful work of the Battle Creek Fire Department and Life Care Ambulance Service, as within those last two weeks, we've had them at our house twice, once to take me to the hospital and the other one to take my wife, who is not doing very good. Excellent job, very professional, as they came into our house to get us and take us to the hospital so we could get proper medical treatment. The third topic I have spoken on before, and I'm coming back in front of the Commission again, I came back about six months requesting for funding for people with housing, for felons, and for things like that. I am now at a standpoint where that funding has expired, thanks to my commission helping me the best she could. We have found out that Neighborhood Inc. has told us that we can get no more funding for eighteen months because that is their policy. Now, I find it very difficult that if funding is given, if there's funding, there, you know, you know that a person is struggling, you know that they're trying the best they can, why are you putting an eighteen-month, that's a year and a half, requirement, and then before they can get any more funding, to pay for a housing that they have, which you graciously helped them with, and they need a little bit more of a step up to help them continue to live into this house, so that you don't put them out on the street in the cold weather, and they're dealing with losing property, they're dealing with being on the street, living under the bridges, or anywhere else. It makes no sense because it is not common sense to disrespect people like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment?
John Kenefik, two thirty-four South Avenue. When loans were taken out by the government of Battle Creek with the approval of the city commission, the government cannot lose, even if they fail, it wasn't their money. Less than ten years ago, the approval by the city commission was to spend three million dollars from the sewer treatment part of your water bills, and they were going to create what's called a fuel pellet. They cannot lose. If they succeed, which they purchased the equipment and the property to create this fuel pellet, if they succeed, they would sell the pellet for profit and keep the money themselves, even though the citizens or the people that pay their water bills are the ones that funded that. The citizens cannot win. If they fail, which they did, they lost the three million dollars, it was forfeited, because no one took the intelligence to do their due diligence. Their due diligence was to find out that when they were trying to create a fuel sewage pellet, that they were toxic, because no one could figure out that the words drano, liquid plumber, muratic acid, that go into the system makes them toxic, and that's why it failed. But the citizens, they were the ones that really failed because they lost the money that was wasted doing this project in the first place. They did not do the sewer treatment plant system, did not do their due diligence, let alone the city commission that authorized this. Now, we've had three resolutions for twenty-plus million dollars that I spoke of just a short while ago. I spoke with the finance department, and I wanted to make sure that no funding was coming from outside the city of Battle Creek. If it is correct that you're taking money from the wastewater treatment, water, sewer, sewer readiness, whatever, that's still a tax. And what are you doing? If that's the way it's going to be spent? It's another loan that they're going to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of six million dollars. The citizens cannot win, and the city of Battle Creek and this commission cannot lose because it's really not coming out of their pockets or your pockets. So, it's really interesting where they cannot fail and the citizens cannot profit from this. If they made money, and many times, the city government has taken issues where there was a cost incentive, a cost benefit, taxpayers pay for that, they pay, the taxpayers pay for the full benefit, and the difference between what it was and what it is, the benefit, the government of Battle Creek keeps. Don't you think the citizens should benefit from the benefits from the money that is spent by the government that's a cost benefit? Apparently not. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, any Commission comment? Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. Sometimes when you work in the school, the sick gets you, and that's what happened to me last time. But I did want to give an update about what has been going on at TAC. So, we are working with FTA and MDOT to transfer designated recipient status to the TAC before October first. This will allow the TAC to receive state and federal grant dollars. The TAC Board approved a purchasing policy at the last meeting and is now issuing solicitations for professional services such as legal, accounting, and marketing, and those are expected to be awarded this month, allowing the TAC to begin securing agreements, contracts, and communications. One question that does keep coming up is, why did the TAC levy the millage now? And the answer to that question is because the TAC needs those dollars now in order to start securing capital assets, pay for services, and to match the grant dollars that will be coming in October first. If there is any questions from the Commission, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions for Commissioner Morris? Commissioner, thank you for the report, very nice. Any other, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, this past week, met a couple of tourists that came to Battle Creek, and they were downtown looking for something to do, and I directed them to our wonderful map that we have outside the building to some locations around the area, like Monument Park and the Underground Railroad and Kellogg House, and it's kind of got me a little bit going that people come here for conferences and they want to see the history of our town, and I was just so kind of proud of that, that got to meet them, and then some other people were down there at the same time, kind of looking for other locations like the toller building and stuff like that. So, it was just, it was really nice that we provide to our community, just to our citizens that need, like, serves at toller building with people from out of town. I'd also like to talk about the Black History Month. It was great that we have a commission that acknowledges that, but also over at Keller Community College, this whole month, there is multiple events there, the other, the community sing event, and then the people come up to me all the time and asking me about this, also, it's their day when they do soul food is February nineteenth, if you get a chance to go out there for lunch, and that sells out like immediately, it starts at like eleven o'clock, but I literally took like six calls today, just for people wanting to know when that day was. But there's so much going on for Black History Month, and I'm glad that we can help contribute to that in our city. Another thing is, is everybody keep a lookout, if you want to go to the website, and name our snowplows, we've been using them a lot lately, there's, there's ten of them there, so they're asking for names, and just to have a little fun thing. And one more thing this weekend, again, is the Festivus Cardboard Sled Race down at Lila Arboretum, if anybody could make it there or make a sled, it'd be great. The registration starts at twelve and then one o'clock, even if you just come down there to see all the excitement of what people just want to build and have fun and go down the hill, and it's a great place to meet one another and have a community gathering. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. Any other Commission comments? Seeing none, we'll adjourn our meeting, thank you for attending. Thank you for attending.